Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And so we just had our meeting with the Select Board on the Conflict of Interest Policy. And, you know, in my memo I said we'll talk about it tonight, but I'm wondering if we should actually bring it up when we do our business, sort of business meeting, our once-a-year business meeting. Just, I assume everyone's read the policy and I think the most important thing is just to disclose and we'll have an open discussion if anyone thinks they have a real or perceived conflict of interest with anything that's being addressed or voted on by the Planning Commission.
Maggie, can I just say, everybody knows my wife is very involved in RGH, and that's going to continue for a bit. Maybe Hannaford isn't part of their work, but other things are. So if anybody, I'll certainly keep this in mind, strongly in mind, but if any of you have any concerns that I'm somehow prejudiced or have a conflict of interest about any of the RGH stuff, or anything else for that matter, but particularly RGH, please, please, tell me, bring it to my attention, mention it at this board. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Could I just address the same thing? Same as John said, if you have a problem with me, let me know.
Well, you know, for me, sucks. We all married well, as I said, but, you know, sometimes it gets us into trouble, so, yep.
All right.
So it's on you guys. If you think I'm warped, wacko, headed the wrong way, let me know.
Well, I think when we start discussing specific, you know, things that we're working on, that's when, you know, that's when issues might come up. But, yeah. Okay, any agenda changes?
I just have a quickie at the end.
Okay. Any public comment or on agenda items? Apparently not. Okay, so, Select Board change to the official map?
Right, so to refresh your memory and for the viewing audience, it was at your last meeting that we talked about the fact that the Select Board at their December 4th public hearing on the proposed official map changes decided to revise what you sent them further. So they had made some minor tweaks before holding their public hearing, but nothing substantive, but at that hearing they decided to make a substantive change, and that was to remove Community Facility 34, which is the park essentially proposed on a portion of Lot 15 on Commerce Street. And so they're going to hold another public hearing and then take action on that revised official map without Community Facility 34. And statutorily, when they do that, you're supposed to revise the report that you drafted that speaks to whether this proposal complies with the town plan and furthers the town plan. So what I provided in your packet was a draft report addressing that, which basically said, here are all the changes the Select Board made, both minor and substantive on Community Facility 34, and the previous report that said this is in keeping with the town plan is the same. This change is a substantive change, but doesn't make the proposal not conform with the town plan. So you need to be comfortable with that statement. That's the report, that's sort of the dry report. I also did a memo more specific to your conversation about that issue and about the two other sort of tangential issues that were raised at the Select Board hearing, one of those being, should this official map change be tied to changing the maximum square footage for retail uses in the Commercial District? And should we change the official map further in the areas where it's within the flood hazard area of Patrick Brook? Because we do show a road that crosses Patrick Brook and some anticipating development in that area. So that's what the memo addresses, that's probably the more substantive piece of it, but the required report does have a position, which is even though the Select Board monkeyed with your proposals, it still conforms to the town plan. So with that said, tell me how you want to change that, whether you disagree, I was trying to read your tea leaves from the last meeting.
In response to the piece about the 20,000-square-foot cap, is that, could we include that? Is there a way that we could include that in this?
Yes, and so what the memo says is that you plan to at least discuss it as a part of these architectural and streetscape design standard that you're working on. So yes, that's what, I hope that's what the memo said, is that Select Board takes solace in the fact that the Planning Commission has that on as part of your front burner.
Right, I guess, yeah, I saw that, and I guess what I'm wondering is, if the Select Board's asking us, or they're not asking us, is there to include it in the thing that's before them now?
No, so their motion at the December 4th meeting was to change the official map to remove Community Facility 34 with no other changes to the official map, and no other sort of changes to the zoning regulations. So although one Board member, Jeff, who came to your last meeting to talk about this, you know, thought maybe they could be connected, that wasn't part of the Board's official action, and so you don't, I don't think you need to make it, you don't need to respond to that any more than what this memo implies, that you found that it is worthy of discussion, and that you'll be having that discussion sooner rather than later.
I have a question about, does, this cap, possible cap, 20,000-square-foot, you suggest we will discuss when we're dealing with the design standards?
Yep.
That's a discussion, but in terms of actual recommendation, wouldn't that be a change to the zoning?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So you have to have the discussion first-
Right.
-to decide whether you want to recommend a change to the zoning that would accomplish that, or something different from that.
Right, okay, but, so there's no problem with discussing this initially based on our review of the visual design standards, but in fact later creating a zoning ordinance that says this?
Yeah, so, my vision is that you're going to have a discussion about the building and streetscape design standards, and those design standards will, once you're satisfied with them, they will be a zoning regulation revision proposal.
Right.
So we're going to take all these standards and stick them in the zoning, and as part of that discussion, you're going to decide whether one thing you stick in with them is a cap.
Okay.
Or some other change to square footage.
Which might be in another section of the zoning-
Oh, yeah.
...than the visual design standards and so forth.
Yes.
But that's, there's no problem with approaching it that way.
No, 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 there isn't any problem, because in fact, the design standard discussion you're having, although I haven't provided it to you on a platter yet, will be more than just revising one section. We'll be touching several sections of the zoning regulations in order to make all the necessary changes for these design standards. So for example, we'll probably be touching the dimensional standards table right at the front end of the zoning, and then we'll be touching the Village Area Design Standards, which is the bulk of where our work will be.
Right.
But we'll also probably be touching at least, you know, one or two other sections of the zoning.
Okay.
So basically, the whole zoning regulations is fair game.
Are open.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can incorporate that retail size cap discussion into that.
Okay, okay.
How far off do you see that? Just guess it.
Yeah, well, I'm, as Maggie and I were discussing, I am overly optimistic always. So I'd hope to have a first draft for you tonight to look at, with the exception of the retail square footage cap, because that needed some more conversation, but I don't have it yet. I have a piece, I have little pieces of it, so I'm trying not to answer your question.
I won't hold you to it, Alex, I'm just asking.
You said an estimate, just, you know.
Well, I think you'll be working on it, yeah, through the first half of the year.
Okay.
I don't think you'll have anything to go to the public with until, well, it'd be nice to do it before everybody went away for the summer, but I think realistically it might actually be fall.
Certainly after town meeting.
Thank you for answering, Alex. Thank you for giving a stab at it.
Yeah. We do have several other items that you are also moving forward, and those will, you know, those mean you have to, you slow down this other work a bit.
Can we do the, can we have this discussion stand, can we have this 20,000-cap discussion standalone and, you know, not tie it to everything else?
Absolutely, yes. So you could do a couple things, James. You could have it as a standalone discussion, and then whatever you decide to do with it, still incorporate it with all these other changes, but have it as a separate discussion on a particular night because it's a hot-button issue. Or you could go further, which is maybe what you meant, and have the discussion, and when a proposal is made to the Select Board, have them be two separate proposals, like one dealing with visual design standards for buildings and a whole nother proposal relating solely to this, you know, retail square foot cap, and give them to the Select Board, you know, as two packages, so that they could act on either one independent of the other. You could do it either way. I think that, I think that size of building is pretty relevant to some of the design standards that Rolf and Maggie have been helping me draft, so I think it fits. I think it's a natural thing that fits in there. And who knows, you know, oftentimes you need a hot-button item to draw the public into the conversation, and maybe that will turn into the one that will bring everyone's attention to these design standards as a whole, but it could happen either way.
I have just a question about the memo to the Select Board. It says at the beginning, Alex, at the conclusion of the meeting, things were revised, and ultimately the community facilities on Lot 34 were entirely removed, and it says 2.19 acres. Is that because we had reduced the size of the community presence on that lot? Because that lot is, what, closer to five acres?
Correct, yes. We had, your compromise at your level was instead of identifying the whole lot as a community facility, you identified just the eastern half of it essentially, along the sidewalk and in that corner near the post office. So, yeah, 2.19 is that revised half.
Where did the community park idea come in? I don't remember that we designated it as that, with walkways, gathering spaces, et cetera.
Oh, it's, it was in the description, the facility, community facilities description that we put together for that number, for number 34. And where it came from, Barb, I mean, you know that already, so that's a cheeky answer, but where we pulled that description from was the Lot 15 committee report from 2011, I think. So that committee had, and you reviewed this at your meeting, they had a nice report with maps that showed what could be possible if the property were used for community purposes, and we had sort of pulled the description from their work.
Okay.
Is there currently a part of town within our current zoning where you can build a building of larger than 20,000-square-feet footprint?
Yes.
So what's really important to know, and be careful when you, in language, is our 20,000-square-foot cap in the Village District and the Village Northwest District is solely for retail uses. So if a-
Industrial.
If a light industrial concern wanted to build in the Village Northwest District, they could build a building just as big or bigger than the NRG facility, which is, you know, in the 70,000-square-foot range. So even in the districts that have the cap, currently the cap only applies to retail uses. So anyways, to answer your question, yes, there are other places in the growth area where you can build a building bigger than 20,000-square-feet, it just can't be retail. Are there places where you could build a retail building of more than 20,000-square-feet?
Two.
Out, the only district is the Commercial District, so it would have to be redevelopment of, it would have to be Lot 15, pretty much, or redevelopment of a lot that already had-
A building that's-
-a building on it. You know, so maybe Storage Solutions decides that they're going to sell to somebody who wants their property, or-
Or lots, you know, 20 years down the road could be combined.
Sure, or, yeah, like the mobile gas station 20 years from now, nobody's using gas anymore, and, you know, the lot gets redeveloped. Or Obashon in 20 years, they decide they want to have a multi-story building because Heinsberg is the place to be, and that sort of thing. But, yeah, outside of that, no, not for retail uses.
And where are the only commercial-use districts? Commerce Park generally-
And Ballards.
And the Ballards Corner.
Yep.
Those are the only two I'm aware of.
Yep, those are-
Well, this, through the street here is all commercial?
Well, it's mixed use, it's in our Village zoning district.
It's called mixed use?
Yeah.
No, I was talking about just the straight commercial districts.
Okay.
There are only two of them.
That was intended, when we just started to touch on this conversation several years ago, was, you know, should there be separate commercial districts, or should they all be mixed use? I mean, that's basically, you know, imagine Commerce Park, again, 20 years from now, one of those buildings gets sucked into a whatever, you know, would it be possible to have commercial on the ground floor and residential above? Would that be a, you know, an option, so?
Right, and I think that is a conversation you have been having.
Right.
And, I mean, you drive this, not me, but I think that is a separate conversation from the design standard one that you're trying to have and will be having soon. Where they start to merge a little bit is when we talk about these design standards and we start to break them down by district and give them some variation based on zoning district, and then you start to wonder, you know, what's the difference between the Village District and the Commercial District right next to it? Do they really need to have different design standards? But, in any case-
Can I ask this? Sorry, no, look, if you finish, no, you can finish your conversation, and then I'll ask my question if you want.
Well, because I kind of do see it as part of the conversation.
You do, okay.
I mean, we are talking about building standards, but where do the building standards apply? Is it just for, you know, Village Northwest? Is it just for, you know, so I think that needs to be part of the conversation, whether it's a separate action item, that could be, but I don't think we can talk about building standards without talking about where they should apply, so.
Yep.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
So does the 20,000-square-foot rule apply to the building or the amount of the building that's used for retail?
That's a very good question. I'm going to rely, I'm going to go back to my zoning to answer that question, let me bring it up here.
That question has come up-
Has it?
Before.
Yes, we have talked about that.
Is it a area devoted to Commerce, or is it the whole building?
Right.
Well, and as part of that question, too, I think, it's not always clear to people, because I'm not even sure it's clear to me, is the 20,000-square-foot a footprint restraint?
Correct.
Or is it a total building restraint?
That's another way of wording what I just asked.
Well, you know-
Very good.
If it's 20,000-square-feet is the limit, does that mean-
On the footprint.
On two stories, you can only have 10 each?
Exactly.
Or does it mean the footprint can be 20? I always thought it was the footprint, but that that was the constraint.
So when this 20,000-foot recommendation, 20,000-foot square cap came up, that came up during when the Select Board was reviewing this with the town, the members of the town, correct? And it was brought up by-
At their December 4th public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. It was Jeff French, our former Planning Commissioner, who brought it up and said, he was at the last meeting, so I'll paraphrase, he basically, at the Select Board meeting, was saying, if we're going to take this community facility off of the map, part of the controversy was over the size of the building. Can't we, can we do that but also fix what he thought was a problem with having too big of a building for that site? Can't we marry those two together? And I think at the last meeting Jeff said, he still thinks that's a conversation worth having, but he's happy that you are going to have it, and doesn't, I don't think he's planning to gum up the works with regard to the official map change any further.
And he, I guess, brought it up because it sounds like what you had just said, because he felt, he had some concern around the size of the building on that lot.
Yep.
Correct.
And he felt that a lot of the community angst around the Hannaford project in particular had to do with the scale of the building.
Right, the size.
With, you know, the segment of the community that was opposed, feeling like it was out of scale, out of character with Heinsberg and with that neighborhood. And he, and his, I think his point was, if we had that 20,000-square-foot cap that applied through that district as well as the ones that it already does, we wouldn't have ever been in this controversy. We would end up with either nothing or a much smaller market that would have fit.
And I understand that, I guess, the one reason that makes me hesitant is just like automatically setting the cap, so, you know, no matter what, if it's bigger than 20,000-square-feet, then there's just no conversation.
Right, it's an inflexible number.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I'm not saying that, you know, for that specific case, like, it sounds like it probably made sense, but what you guys mentioned earlier, thinking years down the road if some other space wants to redevelop or something, but, and it's a project that makes sense, but it's, you know, just a little bit over 20,000-square-feet, I don't know, we would have to say no because of the cap.
Right.
I guess that's just like where, my little hesitation there.
Well, it's a conditional use, though, isn't it? I mean, you can make an application for it. That rule seems to say conditional uses. And if something is over 20,000-square-feet?
No, it says that it's a conditional use up to a maximum of 20,000-square-feet.
Okay.
Anything over that is just not allowed use.
Period, all right.
Yeah. But Dan, I think that what you're pointing to is something that made its way into the town plan, actually, based on the conversations the Planning Commission had way back when Hannaford first came to town for their application. And there was a recognition that on the grocery store side of things, we may actually want a grocery store more than 20,000-square-feet, but maybe not, maybe not 40,000, or maybe not 30,000. It might, we might want to flex that number, given the reality of grocery stores in the modern era, and so there's an action item in the town plan to take a look at that as it relates to grocery stores. But I think the conversation is bigger than that.
Yeah.
And I think all of you are realizing that it has to do with your design standards in the sense that, you know, how big of a box can you put on the land and actually have it feel, function, and work with the things around it in a pleasing way, yeah.
And that question about, you know, should grocery stores have a different cap, a different max, that was the conversation we started to have. Remember, we were going to put together a panel and pull in-
Yes, we were going to bring in some grocery store people.
Yeah, grocery store people, and then, what's his name, Como? He left, he sold, he sold them all?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so he owned and started the Richmond Market, Jericho, isn't there one in Waterbury? Yeah, so he started all those, and-
They were too small, and he left.
So when we, so when we have that conversation again, we should definitely pull up, you know, those, and numbers of, sort of, stores.
I'd like to know the size of those.
Yeah, and sizes of stores in different communities, that would be interesting.
And I would say it's not just about grocery stores.
Right.
I have definitely heard comments from people who have other kinds of stores saying, 20,000-square-feet is not enough to compete in today's business world and economy. We need more space to make our hardware store, let's say.
But I thought, and you could very well be right, John, I don't know, but I thought people were, businesses were starting to go back smaller now, they found that these big box stores-
I'm just repeating what I hear from people who are business people saying, no, that's too limiting.
But also, going way back, and I wasn't on the Planning Commission, but when you said the word "box," I think a lot of that 20,000-square-foot came out of, we don't want these box stores like at Taff's Corners because we consider them unsightly, impractical, whatever.
Everything else they bring.
That's the recollection I have. I mean, I think we could all agree they aren't especially attractive, but maybe you just can't say we don't want any box store, you know?
And there are a bunch of you just nodding on us up the road, so.
Yes, right, and we're a little Heinsberg, so, with that said-
Well, so to answer your question, I think it was you, Rolf, or maybe it was you, Marie, the-
Both of us.
The way that's worded, the way I read that provision of the zoning-
No more than.
It's a retail shop or shop and store or a service establishment up to a maximum of 20,000-square-feet, so that-
So that's the activity.
That's the use, and so if that use happens on multiple floors, then they get dinged for all that space, and so it's not just, it's not necessarily just the footprint. And then the question with mixed, a mixed-use building, you know, is it the whole building or is it just the retail use portion of the building? I would read that to be it's just the retail portion of the building. So there's all manner of nuance that we can try to clarify with, you know, revisions to this.
The Nez, we still call that Neztec over there across from the post office, that's kind of a very unique building. The manufacturing's downstairs, they're living upstairs.
But the upstairs doesn't go, doesn't cover the extent of the-
I think it does.
It does?
It's just the front of the building.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. But, you could have 20,000, what I'm saying is you could have 20,000 downstairs and another 20,000 upstairs if it wasn't retail.
Yeah.
Right.
Correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah, when you're ready to have this conversation, we have plenty of fodder from our previous conversations. We have a list of Heinsberg's building sizes. Included in that list, we have grocery store sizes from other communities, including all these smaller markets and places like Shelburne and Jericho and Richmond and the like. So we have, we have all that data to just, I have it to throw at you again when we have this conversation.
And I know we're not going to have this full conversation right now, but something that helped me when we were on the side committee-
In the wastewater?
No, not the wastewater, the-
Contractor yard.
Contractors yard. What really helped me was having the visual there, because we looked at sizes and we came up with a number, and we were like, well, what, yeah, like, what does that actually mean? Like, you know, can you, where can you physically fit these buildings in these lots and-
Yeah, those maps you did with the-
Mm-hmm. Those were really helpful, because, for me, anyway, I think that would help if we decide to come up with a number, like, you know, what that number, appropriate number would be, or however, anyway.
Because I'd like to see this as a standalone thing and not lump it in with all the other design standards.
The cap issue separate from the other zoning things.
You know, we can be working on them at the same time, and one is ready to go, you know, goes along to the Select Board, and, does anybody else feel in that way?
I think that the 20,000-square-foot thing could be a big issue, or people might not pay attention. It's a different time. I don't know.
Who knows?
You know what I'm saying? Some people could feel very strongly and say, you know, why are you doing that? And then other people could just ignore it. I don't know how people feel right now out there.
If we do it as a separate piece, though, that kind of highlights it-
It does highlight it, true.
-rather than leaving it as part of a single proposal.
I think that discussion needs to be in the building standards discussion.
Yeah.
Because, because we are going to be talking about all types of mixed-use buildings and size and length and whatnot, but we could certainly break it out as an action item. So vote on it separately and send it to the Select Board separately, maybe, as opposed to the entire- to the, the entire building standards changes.
Well, I, I guess, James, um, if it, if the circumstance currently weren't such an aberration, I, I might tend to agree with you Maggie, but, um, realizing that, hey, it only applies to retail, um, Lot 15 was the only place in our community where someone could build.
True.
A retail establishment bigger than 20,000 square feet. It also happens to be the lot in question, and I do think, yeah, maybe it's provocative, but, um, and it's not in reaction to its, at least, removal from the official map, but I, you know, back in 2008, the village steering committee was saying, what's the case here? Why is, why is this one lot, uh, a place where a larger retail establishment can be built? And I think that's still somewhat the case. So, um, you know, unless somebody had in mind, okay, that's a place for a grocery store.
But, but I think they figured nothing would happen there because of the wetland issues and, and because of the borings that, um, the Blittersdorf had done. And other people had tried to do something there and they all fell out.
Yep.
So they figured it's not going to happen, so...
But it's no reason to leave the rule in place, you know, in my estimation. If it's a question of scale, if it's a rational procedure that we go through, and the entire rest of the town, uh, the concentrated urban portion of our community puts a limit of 20,000 square feet on retail establishments, why doesn't it apply to this lot?
Right.
And why should it be held back until we get to the design standards? I don't, I think it's an aberration to begin with and I think it ought to be dealt with.
It is. It has been since they missed it in the first place.
And that's not...
So we are going to discuss it, right? No, no, I, I hear what you're saying. It's a, you, you're certainly entitled to your opinion.
And, and, yeah.
I've won honestly at this point. I don't have one, to be honest.
Well, and I think, I mean, I think you're right, Marie. I think, uh, it's not a coincidence, yeah, there was opposition in this particular instance, but I think it's been very difficult.
Absolutely.
To make that site palatable for...
Right.
The size of establishment that they wanted to put there.
Right. And the rules are more strict now than they were...
Right.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Right.
That's what I understand, so, um...
So in answer to James's question, you would be, you would be on the other side of that. James is saying it would, it'd be good to deal with these separately.
Separately.
And you're saying it would be good to deal with them together and...
The design standards?
And the cap, the retail size cap.
No, I say deal with the caps, like James. I agree with James.
Oh, okay, good. I'm glad I asked because I thought...
You can be confusing.
Totally opposite.
I come from another country.
So, James, you're talking about sending the cap to your Commerce, Commercial District.
I mean...
It is part of the district.
Because it is the whole commercial district that has no cap, not just Lot 15.
Oh, it's not just Lot 15?
No, it's not. So, so, you know, somebody could, you know, 20 years from now buy...
Combine lots, buy...
Somebody 20 years from now could buy up several of those lots, combine them and put in a Walmart. That's, right?
Could buy some of the Jeroos and add it to over shots and get a big lot.
Oh, it's the whole Commerce Park?
Right. So, so just look at what's on the screen. That's the prohibition, right? Retail shops and stores and service establishments, um, up to a maximum of 20,000 square feet. That provision applies in the Village District and the Village Northwest District. It does not apply, that, that, that provision is not, that is not in the zoning for the commercial district. So, the commercial, the entire commercial district, both the portion up at Ballard's and the portion on Commerce Park, all of the, all of the, the properties in those districts are not bound by this restriction.
That's why I brought, I changed my... Brought up my con- my hesitation on the cap because, yeah, I, and I didn't even really think about it until you, until you mentioned that earlier where, thinking, you know, 10 years down the road or something, we would be restricting that entire area to that 20,000-foot cap, you know, not just that one specific lot.
Yeah.
Where, you know, if there was a redevelopment project of some current existing...
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Spaces.
I didn't, uh... So it's not an aberration, it's really just, hey, this is the only lot left.
So, R1 ag, other areas?
Yeah.
What's that?
R1 mag.
So, uh, we, a standalone retail use is not allowed in, um, any other zoning districts besides Village, Village Northwest and Commercial. Even the, the Village Northeast District that the NRG facility sits in the middle of, doesn't allow for standalone retail uses. It's a light industrial residential district. It's not, not supposed to have service establishments and, you know, retail stores. So it's just those three districts here that are in the Village Growth area where retail uses are allowed.
What do you think of that, James? Were you aware of that?
Um, no, I guess not, not to that extent.
Yeah, I think that that aberration that some community members have, have mentioned in the past was not that Lot 15 was, was the only place that you could build a, a retail use larger than 20,000 square feet, but that the commercial district was the aberration, that, that we had this maximum for the rest of the village and we didn't have it for the commercial district and that was an oversight. And I could go on about the history of that. I don't, that's not, I don't believe that's an accurate representation of the history. There was a conscious choice not to have a, a cap in the commercial district. That district was designed from the start to, to be, to allow big, you know, big, single-use retail and, you know, that kind of stuff. But regardless, I think that was the, that was the aberration. Not that that was the one lot, but just that, you know, somebody forgot to include the commercial district in that, with that cap.
And you're saying, no, there was discussion about that and there was a conscious decision not to have a cap?
Yeah, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go quite that far. There, I, I don't know that there was discussion, but if you look at the, at, from 1971 to the present, with all the zoning and the changes that occurred over time, it appears that there was an intention for that commercial district not to have a, a size cap while other districts would. And so it's not like the, the planning commission in 2009 forgot to apply that. It was, when the Village Growth, you know, zoning was redone significantly in 2009, there was a conscious decision to, 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 to leave it the way it was.
Right.
To allow the commercial district to, to be a commercially zoned, you know, area, not the, not the mixed-use area that, that you have been talking more about, perhaps changing it into. So, that vision, I think, is evolving and so we got to have the conversation at some point because maybe, you know, big buildings with parking lots in front of them is not what you want to see in the commercial district anymore.
There have been statements by members of the select board at that time, however, saying, we missed it. We, we, somehow we didn't put a cap there.
Yeah.
That's been stated by select board members.
Ken Brown specifically has stated that several times and some of them at your meetings and I've, I've never, I've never gone to the carpet with Ken about the real history of it, but I, I...
I'm just saying, I've heard that from Ken several times and I haven't gone back through the history either.
I'm sure that is perfectly accurate from Ken's standpoint. I'm just saying that beyond, beyond any individual's understanding, the history of it, I think, is a little more nuanced than that.
Yeah.
I believe Joe White spoke about it one night when she appeared at a planning commission and said, and she was on it at that time.
She was, yeah.
And she said, we just didn't think that that was what I said. It was going to be developed.
Wasn't going to be developed.
That it just didn't make any sense because other people had tried, NRG had tried, the land didn't seem to support it.
Yeah.
So, so that's what I heard.
So, uh, it sounds like you want to have this discussion, uh, not tonight, right? But in a more formalized way. Uh, and then, so my question, because I think this is what you were getting at, James, is does the memo accurately capture what you want to tell the select board about your intentions on that discussion? Or does it, or is it not quite what you want to say? Because it, it says that, uh, the memo says that the commission plans to include a discussion of that cap in the current project on architectural design standards and that you hope to deliver those changes in 2020. And you, you don't know whether the, the retail size cap will be part of what you propose. You may decide not to do anything with it, but you, you are, you are pledging to have the conversation as a part of that project. Do you want me to change the language and say it a little differently? That's, I'm happy to do so.
I, I, I think this is adequate for now. We are going to have a discussion about that.
Are you okay with it, James, or do you want it to be worded slightly differently?
I mean, it doesn't sound like everybody else is wanting to get right to it, you know, separate it out from the other items.
Well, certainly not the discussion. I think we can have a discussion about it in the bigger context and still make a decision. I think if someone said, maybe Maggie, that these two could be then submitted, broken apart and submitted separately.
It probably should be submitted separately. That, it makes sense. And, and the fact is, you just mentioned that you, you have all the materials, you have all the, um, you know, eight by 10 glossy photographs with...
Circles and arrows.
Circles and arrows.
Yeah, it would be easy to drop this on one of your upcoming agendas as a discussion item and then, you know, get it, get the word out to the community so that maybe there's some people sitting in these chairs. I think there might be actually because that conversation has generated interest in the past.
Oh, I'm sure there...
This square foot cap.
Yeah.
These other design standards, I don't think anybody has those, nobody's thinking about those. At least they're not yet until you propose something.
Correct, right.
And they'll be all over you, but, uh, yeah, so...
But it would be interesting to hear what people have to say.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all an interesting conversation.
Um, no, just thinking in terms of buying you a little time on the, on the design standards.
Right.
So...
Yeah, if you wanted to talk about this retail size cap sooner, we could do that while I'm still fumbling around with these design standards on the building and streetscape side.
Would we want to have this conversation before we make the deci-?
Sooner rather than later?
Well, yeah, I mean...
Before, before we decide.
Yeah, I mean, do we, because if we're going to make this decision here and then talk about the deci- design standards, I don't know, to me, that seems like a little bit backwards. Like, I feel like...
Yeah, I think, I think there's an argument you could make that if you, if you have the conversation about the design standards and come to something that you feel very solid about, feeling that these design standards will create buildings that, that look and function the way the community wants them to, that might inform whether you need a size cap or what the size cap ought to be. Because perhaps with enough design standards, you can have a big building and still have it fit. Um, I don't know, Dan. To be honest with you, 20,000 is so big, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to even conceptualize what that would look like.
I mean, is there anything, what's comparable?
Well, that, that, yeah, Obeshaun's is...
The entire shopping mall is 19,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Kinney's.
Kinney's is 11,000.
That building is 10.
Yeah.
11. Okay. So, NRG is certainly quite a bit bigger.
Yeah, yeah.
Firehouse, you said Fire, Obeshaun, the, all of Firehouse Plaza?
The entire plaza is 19,000 square feet.
Yeah, that building, that L-shaped building.
Just the building.
All, all of those different establishments. Taken together are 19,000 square feet.
It doesn't seem that big, does it?
But that's because it's spread out.
It's because it...
If it was a box, yeah.
It's an L-shaped and it's very low and you don't see the back of a building. You know, the way Kinney, you sort of almost see all the way around it and you get a sense for how big it is and it has a higher roof profile, but the Firehouse Plaza, yeah, it is 19.
I, I shouldn't say it so assertively, but I'm pretty sure.
I think you're...
No, no, no. It is when we did, because that's, that's in our little table of, yeah.
Commercial building. And I think it's also worth saying, I, I mean, I, I don't, this is not like, okay, like I'm in the mainstream of what's happening with the growth of urban America by any means, but the whole, you know, where we used to, uh, especially in response to like the late 1800s, you know, when industrial processes were not something that you wanted to be next to. That's, that's really when we started to zone our communities such that, you know, these unpleasant activities happen over here and this stuff happens over here. Well, the reality is that, um, while there's still some of that, um, most of what goes on now, um, you know, isn't so...
Noxious.
Incompatible, you know? And what you see happening is rather than all these different zone districts of different sizes, of different setbacks, of different heights and, you know, they don't, it's becoming much more of an amalgam, you know, where a consistent, like even in our town, we have like, what, five, six, seven different zoning districts in the village area itself. Well, it's going in a different direction. It's starting to say that places like Commerce Park, which are sort of more uniformly organized uses, are viewed as maybe somewhat sterile and perhaps if people live there or other activities were going on there, it'd become more interesting, you know? You, you could walk out of your apartment and go get a beer at Frost, you know, as opposed to, um...
Have it get in your car.
Yeah, or whatever. So, I mean, it's not just a size issue. I think it's also sort of us, maybe it's complicated to sort of revisit all that stuff, but I do think we're moving in a different direction insofar as just how we think about, um, the communities that we live in and what comprises them and what should be next. I mean, obviously there's some things that, you know, we probably don't want to be next to a sawmill.
You don't want to be next to the sawmill. I would agree with that. That's heavy industrial.
It's especially true in a small village setting where everything tends to butt, butt up against each, each other. With that said though, I think Burlington is our true urban setting in this, in this state. And they, as progressive as they are and as, you know, strong a planning program as they have, have bumped up against introducing residential uses to certain parts of the city.
Look at Pine Street.
Exactly. The South End is, and Pine Street...
I saw that in Portland, Oregon.
There was a lot of pushback that essentially stopped the city from adding residential uses. And it wasn't because people thought it was, um, a sterile environment that, that nobody could walk around it and enjoy. It was because of gentrification concerns and the, and the fact that the residential market...
Housing would drive everybody out.
Yeah, exactly. So, and, and those, we're not Burlington and we never will be, but I think that I, in the past, I've heard business owners express similar concerns about Commerce Park and introducing residential uses into it, um, that might eventually push out the, the, the commercial uses that just need a place to throw their stuff and do their thing and not be bothered by, um, you know, the neighbors who don't want, don't want to listen to...
Well, isn't that basically light industrial over there? Commerce Street? I thought, I always thought that was zone light industrial.
No, no, it's commercial. It's, it allows for light industrial, but it also allows for all the...
And that's not always real compatible with residential, like industrial. I guess there's a point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, it depends.
It is and always.
I, I agree with you, Ralph. I'm just saying that there's some nuance to it. It's not like everything is going to be, going to be mixed use in every community. There, there, there will be some conversation about whether there should be set asides. And I, I'm not presupposing what the answer is for Commerce Park because I've heard you talk about the desire to make it more mixed use and I understand that. And it'll be really interesting to get the community's feedback on that, whether, whether as planners, we see an opportunity to, to revitalize that area and maybe the community sees it the same way. Or maybe the community thinks like, "That's fine. I, I always think it should be a place to just, you know, have businesses and not people."
Well, you were here when we showed a little piece of that, which isn't technically to the Jero's and they didn't much swallow that one.
True, and I respect their opinion because they're landowners. But I'd be really interested in hearing the rest of the community's opinion who, who don't have a vested interest in the property, but, but still have a feeling about how they want their community to look and work, you know, in the future.
I think what I, what I see that's happened over there, at, at one time where Jero Body Shop is now and where they created their Commerce Street, there wasn't a lot going on there years ago. So, it was fine for light industrial.
Yep.
But now, like Ralph said in his presentation, you know, it's the very center of the village.
The future village with the build-out.
Which is unfortunate because it's kind of like things have moved in to their area, which is, I'm not saying that's unfortunate. It's just, it was light industrial, but now it's turning the other way, sort of what Ralph brought to our attention.
Yep.
You know, we, we, it's not black or white.
No, it's not.
Right. I didn't mean to make it sound like it.
No, no, it was...
This is a trend and we're on there.
No, no, but it was a good presentation and I thought it was very interesting.
Alex, which properties at Ballard's Corners do not have a 20,000 square foot cap?
Everything on Ballard's Corner Road. So, the Jiffy Mart gas station, the bank, the dentist office, the library, the food shelf, the...
There's only one not developed.
The newest restaurant and pub, Bucky's Pub. They're all small lots, though.
Very small.
So, it'd be hard to imagine a 20, a 20,000-plus square foot building on any of them. Although, again, like my, like my example with the mobile station, maybe in 10 years we won't be using gasoline anymore and that, that corner lot is sizable enough, I would imagine, to have a large building on it, especially if it were multi-story. But, yeah, all those lots are, are in the commercial district, so they don't have that restriction on them.
The only unbuilt lot is between the bank and the dentist. And if you look at that piece of land, it's got a stream coming down through it and the topography is up and down and, you know, it would be a major land shaping project to even get a buildable area of any size.
Right.
I mean, you could do it, but you gotta deal with the stream, you gotta deal with the topography.
It's definitely possible on the north side closer to the dentist, but I can't imagine it would be a very large building. You know, maybe 3,000 to 6,000 square feet, not much more than that.
I think originally it was two lots or they thought it could be two lots, but I think over time it being sitting there and like what John said, a stream, that, that possibility's gone away to, to really small lots. But, yeah, it's really questionable.
But that is the uncapped other commercial area.
Yeah, that's compared to Lot 15. The small Lot 15.
So, do you, I'm not seeing a, a specific suggestion on how to change the memo or the report. Does that mean you're okay with the memo and the report as drafted? Again, the biggest conclusion is this, the select board didn't muck it up. Even though you disagree with them, you still think that their proposal meets the town plan. If you're, are you, are you, are you okay with...
I have no objections to the memo. I think it, I mean, that's, I think it expresses what...
And you mentioned that, given the community facility 34 was removed, should be balanced by adding a comparable facility.
Yeah, and saying that your commission will likely work on that.
They're going to deal with that. I, I think it's all right the way it's written, Alex.
Does anyone else have, have any questions or objections to the memo so we could actually get one thing done during this?
You wield that with a cudgel, you know, Elizabeth.
What?
You have to move forward because we're not going to accomplish anything if you keep talking.
More talk.
Well, the agenda has just kind of been, been left behind, if you know what I mean. Okay, so I'm not hearing any noises, positive noises or negative noises. Let's see, so we need a motion to move this forward, Alex, to finalize?
I would appreciate a motion to forward the memo and the report to the select board so it's, you voted on it.
I would make that motion to submit those two as we see in these two drafts.
Kate, you got that?
Got it.
Any discussion?
You want a second?
We need a second.
Oh, second.
Second.
Thank you so much. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of forwarding the memorandum to the select board? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're done. We got one thing done.
So, now you have to exercise your discretion as chair and decide whether we even open agenda item number five or punt it forward because, because I think the clock says you're just about to wrap this one up.
Yeah, I think so. And I, the fact that we started so early, I think if no one else objects, we'll just move on to minutes and other, other business and...
And take this up like first item next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have, maybe we could schedule like a nine-hour meeting on a nice, on a Sunday or something and just...
And do it all then?
Yeah, nobody objects to that. Okay, let's take a look at the minutes of the December 11th meeting. Does anyone have any, excuse me, any additions or changes to the minutes? No. Motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I wasn't here.
That was James and John, Kate, if you didn't...
It's the echo, you're getting all this on the echo, right? The, yeah. Oh, I love this room. Okay. So, other business, you've got five little dots there, Alex.
Right, so first dot, the Conservation Commission submitted a letter with feedback on the Haystack Crossing project. They submitted that letter to the Development Review Board, but they asked that it be copied to your commission. So, I did. I believe it, I believe it was in your packet. Actually, no. I believe it is on the Dropbox site, but I neglected to put it in the email. So, since I'm sure it's easier for you via email, I will, I will email it to you all tomorrow morning.
And it is there in the packet now.
It is in the, it is in the Dropbox. Yep, if you're looking there. In any case, it's, it's rather extensive, so I'm not going to summarize it, but they provided a lot of helpful feedback on the Haystack Crossing project. So, look for that. The only comment I'll make on that is that we've been, our office has been encouraging all of the boards to, you know, review the application if they want to comment on it, try to get comments in. So, thank you to the Conservation Commission and the Trails Committee, which are the two boards that actually did that. The price of actually being proactive is that you sometimes make comments on early drafts that don't represent the final application. And that may be the case with this one in that Mitch and I gave the developer a whole lot of feedback and, and they are in the process of revising their proposal based on that. So, just know that what the Conservation Commission said is still important and valid and worth looking at, but some of those issues may be addressed in the revised submittal that we're hoping to get at the end of this week. I'll let, I'll, I'll let everybody know when we get the newest materials in. We're still hoping to review this at the February 4th DRB meeting, but if we don't get the materials in by the end of the week, it probably won't get reviewed on the February 4th. So, we'll, I'll keep you updated. The second bullet was the Contractor Yard Regulation Revision Update. So, Maggie and I talked about that and we're going to reconvene the subcommittee at the end of this month to make another, take another pass at that. James raised a couple clarifying questions and then I went, which sort of spurred me to actually look closer at it. And so I have a whole bunch of suggestions on how to maybe clean it up and tighten it up. And so we're going to, we've, we've already scheduled a meeting, the subcommittee, for the end of the month to do that. So, you'll be, the full commission will be seeing that again either in February or, well, probably in February, but maybe March. The allocation scoring hearing that you told me to schedule for your second meeting in January, I screwed up on and didn't get the notice to the Citizen in time. I apologize, I feel kind of stupid about that. So, it, it can't happen at your next meeting because it wasn't warned in time for that. So, so I have put in the legal notice and done the proper warning for your February 12th meeting. So, that will be the, the big ticket item at your first meeting in February is the hearing on that. And I'll probably start the, the public outreach on that beginning of next week, you know, via Front Porch Forum and the like. I, I don't want to do it too, too far before the meeting because, you know, it's hard to keep people's attention, but, so apologies for that, but February 12th is when you'll be entertaining public comments on this water, wastewater allocation scoring concept.
Quick question, when is the public outreach?
Right, so what we're, what we're required to do is we're required to legally warn a public hearing in the newspaper of record, which here in Heinsburg is the Citizen. So, we have to have a warning and the Citizen has to be, has to appear at least 15 days before your hearing. And then, other than that, we have to post, post it, a notice of the hearing at the normal places around town, put it on the agenda for that meeting and post that on the website. And we have to notify by mail surrounding municipalities as well as the Regional Planning Commission and the state. So, legally, there's not a whole lot of real public notice because nobody reads legal notices in any paper. And nobody, very few people, I don't think, stop at the post office and flip through all the, the agendas and notices on the board. Yeah, so what we, so we go above and beyond what's required and thankfully, Front Porch Forum exists. So, that, that is the principal means by which I try to generate conversation in the community and awareness. That and just the email list that I have for the whole municipal family, all the boards and commissions, I usually hit both of those.
In the past, haven't we done like postcards?
Yes, occasionally, we, we have done a townwide mailing.
I'm trying to remember what.
So that people actually have something in their mailboxes saying there's a hearing happening, it's important, you know, come out. We don't usually do that, but...
It's expensive and it's hard to...
Because it's expensive, yeah. But we have done that in the past.
Can we do any sort of, any social media?
That's a good, a good suggestion.
Does the town have a Facebook page?
We do, yes. The town does have a Facebook page and I believe a Twitter account. Aaron Kimball on the select board is our webmaster and he sort of helps get things out that way. I have not availed myself of that because I'm, I'm a very low, low-intensity Facebook user myself and I don't have a Twitter account, so, but if you want me to push some stuff out that way, I can do it through Aaron if you think that would help.
And the lead time, you know, possibly the, the Citizen record is harder because it only comes out once a, once a month, but, yeah, February 12th.
That's the other thing we have done on occasion, Dan, is to actually write an article for the, for those papers rather than just relying on the legal notice. So, that, that's an, that's a, that's an opportunity. They're both papers, like Maggie said, the record's tough because it's probably too late to get anything in it for that hearing date, but the Citizen's Weekly and they're very amenable to publishing pictures and articles.
Yeah, when we notify them, what do they? They just put it in the, in their paper, the Citizen?
So, the, the formal legal notice, they have a little eighth page, you know, it looks like an advertisement, but it says legal notice and they plop that somewhere in the paper.
But there's something about the legal notices that it's like my eye just passes right over them. It's like, you know, read this, pretty pictures, don't read this, read this, pretty pictures. So, the idea of doing an article is a really good one. Something with photographs and...
So, I mean, I, I always offer to do stuff and I'd be happy to try to put something together on that front. I'd also be happy to, to accept your offer to, to do it.
Oh, that was smooth.
If you want to, if you want to do an article.
I would be happy to help with, if it's possible, and not even just for our board, but, you know, potentially other boards using social media to help promote information about the town, about, you know, what's going on and the agenda items and, you know, sharing articles. I mean, I kind of do that in my daily job, so...
You do? Well, then we should leverage that. So, why don't I, why don't I put you in touch with Aaron?
Okay.
Because what he did, this was years ago, when, when he first started the Facebook account, he made me an administrator so I could post to it. And I was like, "Aaron, please don't do that. I don't want to..." And, and my, you know, my email and Facebook page all of a sudden went crazy and, and I just tried very hard to ignore it. But if you're savvier on that front, then, you know, if I could connect you two, then maybe you can be a better conduit to actually get stuff up. Because my understanding is it needs to be, it needs to happen more frequently to get people's attention. It's not like a static website where you spend a lot of time putting a page together and then you just tell people to go look at it. With Facebook, you need to entertain people, you know, every couple of days or what have you.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking up when it was last, when the last post was done on...
I mean, I, you know, the one thing with, I guess there's, you know, different settings that you can have on social media, on people commenting and things like that, you know, I guess all of that would have to be taken into consideration as well.
And I think Aaron, as our webbanned, webs, website guy, I think he took, I think he's figured that all out when we first established the town's Facebook page. So, I think that's, I think that's basically in place. It's just a matter of whether he's actively been posting to it. I know he's been pretty backed up with...
Yeah, he's, he's flat out, but I, excuse me for interrupting, but I'm noticing that July 5th, there was a water main repair update and that was clearly Eric gave him the information to post. And then on November 26th, there was something that I'd seen elsewhere about, thank you to the folks who trim the trees and shrubs along the sidewalk network with some great photos. And so I, I'm sure that somebody gave that to him as well. So, yeah, I mean, it's, having another administrator would be awesome, I think. Or at least some, someone else in...
Facebook that you're on?
Facebook, yeah, just seeing. There, there hasn't, I mean, there just hasn't been that much.
Let me connect you with Aaron, Dan, because I, I feel like I should be doing it, but I haven't. And if you're willing to, then more power to you. I can, I can help feed you content to then reshape and feed to Aaron or you can create your own.
Yeah.
I think it's really worth doing. So many people...
I mean, in terms of outreach and, yeah, in terms of...
That's how you stay in touch.
Outreach and, you know, providing knowledge to the residents of Heinsburg, I feel like that could be a potential helpful way. And I'd be happy to help with that for like Planning Commission and start small.
Sometimes you actually get conversations and comments on Facebook based on what postings there are. So, you can, you can get a sense of where people are at about stuff right there on the Facebook page.
Okay.
I'm not on Facebook, so...
All right.
And then the last two items were just notices that I, that I put in your Dropbox if you're interested in looking at them. A hearing that's happening tonight, actually, in Richmond on their zoning revisions.
Oh, let's all go.
Right.
I bet we still make...
And a hearing tomorrow night in Shelburne on their zoning revisions. And then the last piece of correspondence is Joe Iadenzis, "Are You All A Card?", basically saying, "Thank you." But it's, there's a nice note, so I'll pass it around.
Richmond has a nice big new building. Excuse me, I just had to say that. Where?
Yeah, right on, what is that, Main Street?
I guess. Before you turn to go out onto the...
Bridge Street, isn't it Bridge Street?
I don't know. Whatever, do you know what I'm talking about, though? The building is...
It's right where the railroad comes through.
Yeah, it used to be the cheese factory, even the...
Well, back there was the cheese factory behind where that new building is.
And that's just phase one, I think.
Yeah.
Gris Mill Builders, they bought, we sold some lumber over there. They seem like nice people. A lot of federal, I think, state funds.
It was a very long, difficult, complicated...
Yep, right.
...project.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. But it's not, I don't think it's all octopod.
No, it's not finished yet or fully octopod.
But they had a grand opening.
Have to check it out.
Yeah.
And Barbara, you said you had something?
I got this book for Christmas. I haven't read it all yet, but I think it may apply well to what we're talking about.
Urban, transforming urban design. Through, our lives through urban design.
So I'd be glad to share it with you.
Did you, and so you read it or you just got it?
I just got it for Christmas and.
So if you want, Barb, after you have a chance to read it, um, Aaron Kimball, actually, uh, a little bit before the turn of the new year, dropped off a bunch of planning related books from his library that he was like, these are just sitting on my shelf, maybe some of the planning commissioners that I used to work with might be interested, so if you want to read it and then if you want to, you want to bring it to the planning office, I can add it to that pile.
You have a library up there?
Yeah, and I.
That's a great idea.
If you ever want to just stop by and grab one of the books to peruse or read, you're welcome, that was Aaron's intention, was like, you know, make these available.
Nice idea.
So actually, I'll prob, I can just bring them to the next meeting and sort of lay them out and.
You can assign them and people can do book records.
I am not doing that.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything, any other business? Then people, the show is over. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.